...a presentation by the County Center for Prevention regarding marijuana. And I'm going to ask Nick Luizzi and Anne Marie Schaper to come on up and tell us about marijuana. Because you all know, there's a lot of conversations about growing, about selling, medicinal. So they asked the center to come down and give us some information and guidance on that. So thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having us. And just the clarification, I don't work at the Center for Prevention. I work for the County Assistance. I'm the coordinator of the Office of Alcohol and Substance Use Services. So I was asked by the center and actually the regional coalition, of which I'm a member, for helping these communities to speak tonight about the topic. And Anne Marie Luizzi is also part of the regional coalition and works at the center.
Yes, I've been at the center for eight years. I'm a member of the regional coalition, as well as the Director of Recovery Support Council at the Center for Prevention and Council. I've been at Sussex County for over thirty years, over the life of my career. Thank you for having us.
It was brought to our attention that Hopakong, considering moving forward with the potential of opening a dispensary for medical marijuana. And we are not here to say that we're against medical marijuana. There are certainly anecdotal and some scientific research that shows that medical marijuana is effective in some cases. But our concern is more toward the drive for legalization of recreational marijuana, and how that will affect communities that have already in place medical marijuana dispensaries. I don't know if the council is aware of that. Governor Murphy has said openly that if and when it becomes legal recreationally, he expects the medical dispensaries to become recreational dispensaries. So you've kind of already got the door open to that, that it should occur. Now, I'm not here to tell you that you shouldn't have a dispensary, but there are some things, there are some questions that I would want to ask if I was considering it. One, if a dispensary were to come to town, how would that dispensary appear? What would be our appearance? Would it be a storefront? Would it be a rose building? I believe on the statute they have regulations as to how the building is supposed to be maintained and how it's supposed to look. That would be a question I would want to ask. Where would it be located, a dispensary? One of the main issues for most dispensaries is transportation to and from the dispensary and parking. And if you look at the idea that recreational marijuana may be down the road, and this dispensary is expected to become a recreational dispensary, how is that going to affect the traffic and parking in the town? Now, I can tell you from my experience, I happened to drive through Massachusetts on vacation when they opened up their dispensaries for recreational use. And out of curiosity and, you know, professional research, I said, "Let's go take a look at it." My wife was not pleased with me for doing her side trip, and she didn't want to do that. She hates side trips when I do that, too, but I said, "Let's go take a look." So we took a drive past this dispensary. And it was interesting. They had uniformed police officers directing traffic outside the dispensary. There was no public parking in the parking lot of the dispensary. It was in a commercial business district. When I asked a few people some questions about it, the response I got was that when it became recreational use, they arranged for a parking facility several miles away from the dispensary, where you would go to park, and you would take a shuttle bus to the dispensary to get your marijuana, and then you'd take the shuttle bus back to the parking lot. That was done to avoid traffic congestion, yet they still need uniformed police to help with traffic when you're on by. And there was still a line outside the dispensary, people waiting to get in. And approximately forty-five members of people who came from all over the state to get their recreational marijuana. Now, I'm not saying that that would happen here, but it was something that you need to consider when you're considering establishing a dispensary that may become a recreational use dispensary. In states where marijuana has gone from medical to recreational, these dispensaries were all stepping in. They opened up as medical marijuana dispensaries. Once it became recreational use, in that state, they were almost automatically recreational use marijuana dispensaries. Some of the things that they found in some of these states that are just medical marijuana is that there's some illegal sales going on because people are getting it. In New Jersey, the governor signed a bill in July that expanded the program for medical marijuana. Almost there in medical marijuana, but just not in the law in New Jersey, because he was looking to avail it to people with a wide variety of medical issues. They've shown in some of the states where medical marijuana is used or medical marijuana is ruled like New Jersey, that the access to youth has increased. So even though they're saying youth will not be permitted to use marijuana, even if it becomes recreational use, it won't be permitted under twenty-one, it's still getting to youth. And they have seen an increase in the use of marijuana. The whole conversation about recreational and medical marijuana has led to a significant decrease in the perception of harm among young people and other vulnerable populations about marijuana and its use. And there's a recent study that came out of England. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of study being done in the United States because of the federal ban on marijuana, because it's regulated as a level one, Schedule One drug penalty. So there's not a lot of research being done here. But a lot of the research that is being done is being done in Europe. And recently, the Lancet, Lancet Psychiatry Group in England, released a report showing that THC, the high THC levels in marijuana are causing significant psychological illnesses for people who are using it nowadays. We don't know what it's going to do because of lack of research. A lot of the medical, the people who are in favor of medical marijuana are using anecdotal support rather than real scientific proof. You can get a marijuana card much, a medical marijuana card much more easily after a couple of bills that were passed in New Jersey. You can get it for ALS. You can get it for anxiety. You can get it for cancer. You can get it for carotid aneurysm, glaucoma, inflammatory bowel disease, including Crohn's disease, retractable skeletal spasticity, fastissity, migraines, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, opioid use disorder. You have a heroin epidemic going on. We all know about it. We've heard about it forever. Now they are saying that you can get a medical marijuana card if you have opioid use disorder. I don't know if that's a great idea personally. If I had a family member who had opioid use disorder, I don't know that I would say go get a marijuana card. PTSD they're using it for, seizure disorder, including epilepsy, terminal illness, Tourette's Syndrome. And a lot of these cases, a lot of these people with these illnesses are saying that it helps them, and it may very well be helping them. But there are prescription drugs that are now available that contain many of the same ingredients that are helping these people. Some of those prescription drugs are approved by the FDA with a cannabinoid, which is the non-intoxicating part of marijuana, like I just, that helps with seizures and everything else, and all of these other disorders and all of these medical illnesses. You can get epidolics for seizures, which is an FDA-approved drug, which has cannabinoid in them. Genabalinol is another pill that treats nausea and helps boost appetite, is a therapy medication. And then Mabalone, which is another FDA-approved drug that has the same or similar chemical compound that cannabinoid has. So there are medications available. In July of this year, they expanded the medical marijuana bill to include raising the monthly limit from two ounces to three ounces, and it's unlimited for terminal patients. Authorization period is now to a year for medical use. So you don't have to go back to the doctor every ninety days like you used to to get the reauthorization for medical use. It's good for a year. Physicians assistants and advanced practicing nurses are now allowed to write, and they can't prescribe it because they're not prescribed one, but they write a recommendation. They write a note saying this person should have medical marijuana. That's how they look at it. We now have home delivery, which is available in New Jersey. So if you're concerned about the distance that you may have to go to get your medical marijuana, these facilities are now allowed to deliver it to your home. And edibles are now allowed, whereas it wasn't allowed before. It's not to say that, I'm not saying that Hopakong shouldn't do it, but I think Hopakong should think very hard about the distance where a dispensary, especially if recreational use is passed. And especially if you're thinking about the juvenile, the youth. Recent studies showed that the medical marijuana laws on juvenile marijuana use found that they were consistently higher in states that passed it and soon passed medical marijuana Some of the other considerations besides security, traffic congestion, perception of harm by youth, and location of a dispensary, you also, if I were considering this, I would also be concerned about safety. I'm a retired police officer. I always think about safety. These are going to be off-security at the dispensary, event any kind of incident, especially after it's closed, you know, breaking and things like that. A lot of considerations to think about before you have a dispensary open up in our area. My previous response to that is, if I can get it delivered to my house, why bother having them go to town, especially if recreational use becomes legal? And it's automatically considered, or not automatically, but the governor has said the medical facilities will become recreational facilities if recreational marijuana is banned. There's something to be concerned about. I could also throw out the distance from New York and having substance use overview for Sussex County from 2018. And I'd like to just point out that we do have a very big heroin epidemic in the county. But our treatment admissions in the county ranked one, two, and three are heroin, alcohol, and marijuana. Marijuana is the third highest drug that people receive treatment for in the county. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but in ranking communities within Sussex County, the number one community for substance use and marijuana treatment in Sussex is Newton, number two is Franklin, number three is Hopakong, and that's where it is now. Lower perception of harm and the addition of the dispensary is going to increase the lower perception of harm, and it's going to have a negative impact on treatment admission in the community as well. That's my prediction. I call this heroin epidemic, before I retired from police work, I'm retired seven years. And about ten years ago, I said, "We're going to have a problem with heroin because of the way they're pushing out these prescription drugs." And I hate to say I was right. We're going to have a problem with marijuana if they continue pushing forward recreational use because of the number of treatment issues that I'm seeing. If you had your sharing this information with New York, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
I would just recount what Nick said. In addition, do your own research before you make a decision. Go online, look where other places have placed dispensaries, and look at the problems that are occurring, and whether it was first just medical and then recreational. Like Nick said, they are in line. Any dispensary that is a medical marijuana dispensary is in line to be, and let's be honest, it's a pot shop. You want to call it a dispensary, it becomes a pot shop. Look at what's happening. I grew up in the seventies. I am not a prude when it comes to understanding drug use. I deal every day with people that are struggling with drug use, but I also understand, some people also sedate, and maybe there's a harm reduction factor, that although someone may have been, you know, shooting heroin one day, they're getting less and less. Maybe they're using marijuana now, and eventually they'll go to an abstinent-based recovery. We're not saying that there aren't certain possible uses for marijuana and people that are really sick that need it, surely. That is, you know, a use for a drug. But like Nick said, we do have FDA-approved medications. There's nothing FDA-approved out of this. You're basically going into, so say for instance, you have an elderly parent who's using marijuana, for say, at Canton. They run out of a certain product in Hopakong. They go to Florida. It's, there's no like regulated, they're not going to find the same product in the same potency. It's a very, very unscientific field right now. And having grown up in the seventies, you know, back then marijuana that was grown had about a three percent THC level. The marijuana today, it's a biologically enhanced, talk about, you know, yeah, you know, a genetically modified product. It is, the grown rye marijuana today has upwards of sixty to seventy to eighty percent THC. But this is not the pot that was smoked back in the seventies. This is a whole different animal. In addition, the oils, the edibles, oils upwards of a hundred percent THC. Like, I just think that it's a good, rather than, you know, we understand towns look for ways to supplement income perhaps, and look at things that will enhance an area's tax base. But honestly, in this arena, I would look elsewhere to, and look elsewhere online. When you do go online and you are Googling things about marijuana dispensaries, don't go to the first one you see. Go to things that are science-based. Smart Approaches to Marijuana, it's a site called SAM, has incredible information, and they've been following the problems that are going on in Colorado. You know, all the money that was supposed to be made from marijuana and the school system, look at what's happening in Colorado and see what's going on. And I think before you make a decision, it's really important to not base your thoughts on your own experience having, and this isn't about letting Uncle Joe smoke some pot in the backyard. This is about a big business, similar to the tobacco industry, that wants to hook his young and hook them for life. This is another addictive industry, similar to alcohol and tobacco. And if you think anything else, and honestly, if someone's sick and needs a medication, whatever they need, if they're in end-of-life situation or real pain situation, give them whatever they need, whatever they need. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a majority of people who had substance use problems, who are now getting medical marijuana cards for symptoms that can't really be diagnosed, similar to, you know, pain. You can't, you can't, you know, and honestly, I see more and more parents and young people coming to us for treatment who, listen, in the beginning, marijuana works great. A kid smokes a joint, you know, anybody, if the brain hits the brain, it makes you relax. It's that continued use is incredibly dangerous for mental health, mental illness. We have already a mental illness population in our country that we don't know, you know, how to house, handle, hospitalize, and treat. Not enough, there are not enough psychiatrists in Sussex County for the problems that we have right now. I think it's just an invitation to more and more problems. And like Nick said, you can get your marijuana delivered. One of the other problems I want to point out, and one of the reasons Ranchville voted no to this just a few months ago, was there are, there's online apps on your phone. One is called Weedmax. I suggest you look it up. It means anybody traveling through Hopakong that wants to buy marijuana at a dispensary, all they do is type in the zip code they're going to be in the town, and they know where to come for marijuana. And that would be on that Weedmax app, for sure. So.
One of the other issues that has come up with not just recreational use, but medical use is diversion. And they're finding that some of the marijuana is being diverted, meaning that the people who were dependent for are not getting it, it's going elsewhere. And that's not to say that the delivery is fault. What it's saying is that there are uses being done with medical use.
Can I interrupt you one second? Not only that, people with legitimate medical marijuana cards are many times buying their marijuana on the street. They're getting a card, have the card, to be able to prove when they do have marijuana, if they are stopped or in a situation, that they are a card-carrying medical marijuana card, that's legitimate for them to have it. But I just spoke with a clinician who said people are often purchasing medical, purchasing marijuana outside of a dispensary, a lot of times because of the cost involved. This is confirmed with information by double-checking their medical marijuana card number through the online site, so that the clinicians are noticing that people aren't even purchasing medical marijuana. They're buying it on the street anyway because of the problems associated with the price and the quality and the value.
So thank you all very much. If you'd like to ask any questions, I'm going to go. So thank you. Let me spring with the council and with why you're here. The borough was approached by a company and inquired about a dispensary for marijuana. And so, not really in my comfort zone, so rather than proceed that, you know, the municipal alliance with John Young, John and myself, we're very active with drug prevention and we work closely with their central prevention. And so rather than make an uninformed decision, John was instrumental in getting you down here so that we could publicly have you talk about the issue with the council and the public, because ultimately the council will have to make a decision at some time or other. And I would prefer that it's informed, and so that everybody has the information at the same time. That's why you're here primarily. Our community center works closely with the center. We applied for a grant. Hopefully, we can get that grant with your help, Nick.
Sure.
And we're going to bring some of them resources that you talked about, Anne Marie, to Hopakong, because we do have a drug problem. And we're addressing it. And this is one way that I think is the best way to address it, so, and that's information. Information and data which you supply. So I think, John, you have anything to add before we open it?
No, other than thank you very much. It was very, very important, and I wrote several notes and I'm doing my homework.
So we take this very seriously, and I'm on the record, I am on the record, saying that if marijuana is legalized in the state of New Jersey, after it's legalized, I will introduce an ordinance prohibiting its sale, growing, storage in the borough of Hopakong. I can't do it now, because I understand that if we do do it now, when they pass it, it will negate any existing ordinance. So we're prepared. I've asked my attorney to have an ordinance ready. So when it is legalized in the state of New Jersey as recreational, I will introduce this order in the borough of Hopakong, not allowing that.
I would suggest that if a dispensary is voted on and approved within the borough, that if you look at how the legal, how the statute is written, that will allow them to transition into recreational use. You may not be able to stop it.
Without their concern, and that's why you're here. And so, again, it'll be an informed decision.
They keep changing the way they write the statute for recreational. And that's how this, you know, if you have an ordinance that's already been passed, it becomes null and void. They threw that in there because towns already put passing ordinance against it.
That's right.
So another thing would be the transition of a medical dispensary to a recreational use dispensary. It's already permitted. The town may not be allowed to, for recreational use.
Well, we have a lot of, and we'll keep getting information, so you might get another call from us for more information. So we're going to make an informed decision, the governing body will, and it's based on input from you all.
I have a question. Whoever approached you for the dispensary, was there incentive, incentives involved? Because there was, there was with Ranchville.
No, the question was, we like, we're thinking about, if I remember correctly, we're applying for a license in the state of New Jersey for a dispensary. We, for some reason, they gave to Hopakong, they did come to our land use board and asked for information. And we said, "Well, you know, no decision's made." But that kind of struck a chord, that we need more information. But not on the level that they're at, but on the level of, you know, we have to make a decision that's going to affect our town significantly as well. And so that's why I have a lot of faith in the Center for Prevention. We do good work. The municipal alliance does good work, and we don't want to undo that work, if you will. So with that, I would entertain the public to ask you any questions, if that's okay with you. So if you have any questions.
I have a quick question. You had mentioned SAM. It's S-A-M. What's the A stand for again?
Smart Approaches to Marijuana.
Is that SAM dot com?
Um, it's.
Dot org? It's rigid.
Learn about SAM dot org.
That is.
And there's another group called NJ Ramp, which is a New Jersey group associated with SAM. Don't ask me what the acronym is.
Responsible Approaches to Marijuana Policy.
So this is such a sensitive issue and important issue, we're not going to, we want all the information we can get there. So with that.
I'm going to give you my information also. I'll move with the first. If anybody has any questions, they want to reach out to me, send me an email, call my office, I'll be happy to give you more information, as much as I can.
Sure. You might be back here.
My pleasure. I like Hopakong.
Yes, we do, too. We kind of, we're kind of partial to it.
Sure you are.
On your 2018 admissions of treatment in the county, I'm not sure if I got that middle pack. You started out with Newton and then it went to Franklin.
Franklin.
It wasn't Franklin. Okay, sure. If the public has questions, please ask.
Hi, Mary Ellen Levine. So first off, let me just preface by saying that I'm a nurse and that we just had a task force presentation on medical marijuana. No disrespect to the center and certainly their concerns, and certainly the concerns of the issues that were raised in regards to the actual dispensary, physical location, all of those things. I don't have a lot of information on that. But I can tell you that the medical card fraud is like frauding a driver's license. Now, it's a picture, it's a background check, it's very involved. It's hundreds of dollars to the person who's applying to it, which makes it actually very tough to get, in addition to anyone who is authorized in order to be able to obtain it, marijuana on someone else's behalf for medical use in New Jersey. The other thing I wanted to point out was that as far as the medication itself, the THC, there is medical doctors as well as pharmacy who are very versed in the dispensary techniques. And yes, the recommendation comes from the field, but that the actual dispensary goes from, it's not high dose down, it's low dose up, and it's very specific to the parts of the brain where the marijuana, where that ingredient needs to interact in order for there to be blood-brain barrier, if there needs to be, if we need to go to neurological issues and cover those types of things. It's very specific. It is a very exact science in that regard. But they do work from bottom up in order to get someone on the dose, on the medication. If the route is, yes, an edible, they will do that. But that is over time, and it's a, what do you call, relationship with the dispensary. The other thing is, from my understanding, as far as the issue of safety and security, that these dispensaries are not necessar, I mean, I've not heard of one being storefronted. There's only, I think, six of them in New Jersey right now, and they're mostly from mid-state down. We don't have any of them in this area. And they're certainly not going to go to Uber in outreach regards to home delivery in New Jersey. And that is certainly something that although is out there, there is no regulation to it at this point, so you're not going to have people driving. So you're not going to have people driving around with medical marijuana. And if you did, they would be vetted the same as someone who was driving a Brink's truck. I mean, you're liter, it's literally got to be that precise and there has to be a lot of things worked out before that'll ever happen. As far as New Jersey and recreational use marijuana, yeah, good luck. If you've ever tried to get anything passed through our leg, our legislature, you know that we're twenty years down the road easily on something that is going to look like this. And unfortunately for the fact that, um, that, uh, what do you call the, um, AAA is saying that, um, there is an increase in car accidents with regards to, under the influence, whatever that influence is. But if you want to equate it to recreational use marijuana, those are the states that are seeing one of the biggest increases in car accidents. I don't see New Jersey going to that. I mean, we're already, you know, pretty hype, um, paying into auto insurance state. So certainly if that were to come to the forefront, I will tell you as a nurse, I would fight it tooth and nail. I think it is not a good way for New Jersey to go. But the fact that we're looking at medical marijuana use, and I will tell you that it has been used behind closed doors by medical patients for many years before we ever sat here. So, and the opportunity to regulate it in any way is very appealing to me. And do you know why that is? Because as a nurse, if you're blowing it in my face, you're getting it on my skin. And if it's in my hair follicle and I get tested for marijuana use, I want to make sure that New Jersey is in a position to make sure that they're protecting nurses and practitioners in this state because people are using it and that's a fact. And the fact that it is medical at this point really speaks to the need for more research on the people who are surrounding the use of this. So put it out there in the open, it is hugely important to me. Keep it out there in the open, absolutely. Put a dispensary up in North Jersey to make sure that people get what they need. I tell you, I would be all for it. Do I think I need it right here in Hapcon? I tell you, it's tough to even get anything built in this state, including something without a forty-foot step back or this county and even this town. So are there uphill bowels for anybody that thinks there's going to be a dispensary here? I hope so, you know, but is it going to determine from thinking that it needs to be here or somewhere nearby? No. And as far as opioid use, I will tell you that people do not use medical marijuana for the intent purpose of getting high. The purpose of medical marijuana is to get the medication into the system and use it in the proper way that it was needed to be for those patients that are going to get it. So, um, you know, I don't really see that, you know, there's much discussion as far as am I for against needing to answer questions? They raise a lot of really good questions and certainly those are the takeaways that I would hope that you would, um, look into. I also recommend, if you want more information about what I'm talking about with regards to the task force I spoke of, New Jersey State Nurses Association Medical Marijuana Task Force, you can look to the NJ SNA website, NJSN A dot org. Speak to our CEO, Judy Schmidt. And if there's any way that we can get you information on what we found out, we're working towards a position statement on making sure that our providers, our nurses are protected in regards to what is legalized so far. And that, you know, and they do have just an awful lot of really good information. And a lot, some of it speaks to maybe answering some of your questions. But I'm just not in authority to speak on it tonight. Thank you.
More questions? Feel free. We'll, we'll continue as, if it does go anywhere, we'll continue to have presentations in public. And hopefully we can make informed decisions if that day comes. Thank you very much again. I appreciate all the comments.